I'm here at Council Chambers, establishment of quorum with all members of council being present. There's a, I ask for a moment of reverence, in particular for our men and women serving to protect our freedoms, not only here in the United States but across the world, and also for our first responders, who are the first ones to be dealing with this situation, and people that may be affected and concerned about their health and well-being over the COVID-19 coronavirus epidemic. So we keep all our first responders, our paramedics, our health professionals, nurses, doctors, et cetera, they're doing an amazing job out there, and please, we want to ask for a moment of reverence for all those people. Thank you. Citizens Communications, recognition?
None submitted.
All right, going on to resolutions, consideration and possible approval of a resolution amending, amending Resolution 2020-16R in order to extend, amend, and/or modify the order of the Second Mayoral Declaration of Disaster Executive on March 22nd, 2020 by the mayor pursuant to 418.108 Texas Government Code regarding the COVID-19 global pandemic. And on this one, Legal, I do have some questions, as we had questions that needed to be answered in terms of what we could actually require doctors to do, so we can take that into executive session?
Yes, Mayor, and we were recommending that we address the item number three also first, because that will dictate what we end up leaving on Agenda Item Number One, on the wording of the resolution.
All right, so we will be discussing all these matters in executive session, so we can step into executive session? Or do they have to make a motion to go into, take items one and two also?
We have to make a formal motion, so you can just read it, and we'll do it under the attorney-client consultation with attorney. So just read number two also, and three, and we'll put in the time and the date, and we'll go ahead.
So item number, do we have to take a motion to go into executive session with each item individually?
No, you can do it all at once.
All together? All right, so we can go into executive session pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney regarding consideration and possible approval of item number one, a resolution amending Resolution 2020-16R in order to extend, amend, and/or modify the order of the Second Mayoral Declaration of Disaster executed on March 22nd, 2020 by the mayor pursuant to Section 418.108 Texas Government Code regarding the COVID-19, a global pandemic. Executive session pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney regarding consideration and possible approval, this is item two, consideration and possible approval of a resolution appointing a local health authority under the provisions of Chapter 121 of the Texas Health and Safety Code to administer state and local laws relating to public health within the city council's jurisdiction. And item number three, executive session pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney regarding consideration and possible action on a resolution calling for the rescheduling of the April 25th, 2020 city officers' runoff election due to a public health emergency, and authorizing legal counsel to take appropriate action to obtain an order authorizing the rescheduling of said runoff election. Is there a motion? Oh, don't, we don't have to, there's no motion, or there is?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to take these items to executive session.
Motion made by Councilman Salinas, second by Councilman Bielpando. Any questions? If not, all the great-
Before we go in, I was gonna ask you, just, I know we're gonna go into executive session, but I wanted to make sure, like, some of these that were here, the Second Declaration of Disaster, are we going through the EOC and through our city secretary for these? Because I know you're referring to Legal, and I want to make sure that when we're all done with this, you know, once we prevail over this global pandemic, that we're following the EOC guidelines, so we don't have any issues for reimbursement later, and we're not putting any kind of financial burden on our taxpayers, burdening our legal system, no offense.
The first step was declaring the declaration, when the first declaration came out, that put our EOC in place, and that is allow, that would allow us to request reimbursement of any expenditures. Will we get them all? We don't know that. But we're, they're keeping a detailed itemized of hours spent, extra hours, materials being purchased, anything that's being attributed to this pandemic, that expenses are being made on, they are documenting it, and it's part of the EOC, one person in the EOC group has that ledger on every, everybody has to report who's putting in extra time over time, what materials are we buying. So all that is being accounted for, and that was the first step in declaring the declaration.
Yeah, that is just like my concern, like I said, because I want to make sure that we're not, that we are following our guidance that we have in place, that we've done in the past. And that, I mean, because remember that these resolutions need to be somewhat concise, or very pithy at best, to make sure that we don't, I just want to make sure all our i's are dotted and every t is crossed, and just be very-
And, and as you-
Because I don't want to have any kind of financial burdens coming back to the city that we don't have to take on, and that's like-
Yeah, and once again-
It's our fiduciary duty to our citizens, so I want to make sure that we are doing what is safe, but we also do have a, we have to be, yeah.
Yeah, no, no.
We're the speakers of the conference, so we need to make sure we're doing that. We're not spending what we don't need to be spending.
EOC is being very prudent, and they're taking measures as they need. We're experiencing something we haven't experienced before, you can see this worldwide, not only here in Eagle Pass, Maverick County, it's happening everywhere. And people are taking steps, and, just so you know, Valverde County Judge, he put out there 50,000, 50,000 to start processing that disinfectant, and he's picking up that tab. Will he get reimbursed? He doesn't know. They're hoping to get reimbursed, and that's all we can hope for. There's been many cases in the past where emergency declarations have been declared, and not all of it is returned. But that's why I know that our team with EOC, thanks to Chief Cardona and his people that he put, that we have in place, they're meticulous, they're taking everything down. Jesse's involved, Ana's involved, so they're, they're keeping account of every expenditure we make. Now, at this point, it's like any other community, I don't think there's an expenditure that communities are not making, if it's going to help the community, and then it's some, we can only hope that we get reimbursed. So I can assure you that they're doing an excellent job, so thank you, Chief, and that team is, I mean, they're on it every day. We've actually isolated them from their duties, and they're working strictly on EOC. They are not dealing with the day-to-day, they need to be pulled out, they will, but they're focusing on that just to make sure they keep tabs on everything.
I think, if I understand correct, Mr. Davis, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think what you're, I mean, I don't think we're, or, you know, the way you mentioned, which I feel the same way. I mean, I know that at the end of the day, when everything's said and done, I know that the taxpayers are going to appreciate the fact that we did everything that we needed to do for them, but they're also going to come back, and we're still, you know, we owe them answers as to what happened. If I understand your question correct, you, you want to make sure that legal expenses are going to be reimbursable too, because if we're running everything to Legal, then our bill is going to be, Legal is going to be huge, and we're not, is that what I understood from you?
That is part of the question, because I know in the past, we would utilize the city secretary, am I not correct, to draft like these declarations of, it's because I noticed in our correspondence that it said that you were waiting for it to come back from Legal, when before, I remember, I mean, like I said, I know it's a different situation, and I am very well apprised of what's going on globally, but I want to make sure, I mean, because was it not done in the past before, run through your office, not through Legal?
Yes, but, yes, but the situations were different, but yes, you are correct.
Okay, that's just my concern, okay? But that's fine, maybe say that's what you're doing.
So there is a motion and a second, any other further discussion? Not, raise your right hand, unanimous? So we're going into executive session at 12:12 PM on March 25th, 2020. And I believe we'll be taking item number three, executive session item number three, executive session pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney regarding consideration and possible action on a resolution calling for the rescheduling of the April 25th, 2020 city officers' runoff election due to a public health emergency, and authorizing legal counsel to take appropriate action to obtain an order authorizing the rescheduling of said runoff election.
Mayor, council, if I may, just as a recap, as you know, we're, the information provided, we have been in close contact with the Secretary of State's office so that they can provide additional guidance. The first governor's order suspended the election code with respect to many of the races that are ongoing for the runoffs. However, it did not apply to our unique situation where we have a special runoff. And because of that, we're left with what the Secretary of State has recommended, that we go and seek a court order, a mandamus action, suspending the special runoff to a later date. And so what we're asking this, this council to consider is to suspend the current special runoff election date because of the COVID pandemic, and to also authorize legal counsel to move forward with filing a mandamus action immediately and as soon as possible, and get a hearing, so that we can get a formal written or opinion from the court that we are okay with having it suspended or postponed to a later date. The resolution that you have in front of you was worked in conjunction with Ms. Imelda, who's the city secretary, and she has gone through the possible dates that this special runoff can be considered for, and I believe, give me the dates, Imelda?
Yes, the possible dates would be, Election Day would be September the 5th, early voting would be from August the 19th through September the 1st.
Now, in addition, we have, the concern from the Secretary of State is obviously that because of this pandemic, you would have people that would otherwise have gone out and vote, and they refuse to leave their homes, and that could present an issue where the whole break, the whole election would be considered null and void. And on the other end, we have the two candidates also, that they may have, since they have a vested interest in this. However, we have reached out to them, they have both verbally said it's okay if it needs to be changed. One of them has already provided written response saying it's okay, and what we plan on doing is including that as part of our petition to the court, to make sure that they, the court is comfortable in making that decision on suspending or postponing our special runoff. So we're asking you to consider this resolution and approve it unless you have any other questions.
And once again, we need to do this because in the governor's statements, he's saying that he does not have the authority to postpone such elections, other than the state ones that were in the runoff for the primaries. So this is a step we got to take to keep our community safe, and hopefully the judge will hear us out and side, take our side, and hopeless postpone the runoff.
This mandamus action has to be filed in district court, and so we're anticipating, we have already reached out to the court systems as well, and they're willing to allow us to have an argument on the mandamus action through a video conferencing. And in addition, I want to let the, and inform the public, that we have heavily tried to work with our state representative and our state senator in getting the governor's office to modify their governor's orders, so that they could include us, and it would be a lot less inexpensive to the city of Eagle Pass and not have to go through this. We have tried for over seven days or so, and we have not gotten a response from the Secretary of State. And we're at that point where you know from Ms. Imelda's input on this, as a city secretary in charge of the elections, we've got to do it, and we've got to act now. And that's why we find ourselves in the situation, otherwise we run the risk of not mailing ballots, not going out, and us not suspending the election timely. And so I just want to let the general public know that you all had instructed us, this didn't show up just yesterday, and now we're scrambling. We have been trying to work heavily with our representatives to try to get the governor to amend their order, and they took, now they're taking the position from what we understand that he doesn't have discretion, and he doesn't have the power to do that, and so we're left on our own and having to file this action.
And you did speak to both of the candidates, and they have no objection, as far as, you know, to-
Verbally, they expressed no objection to it, and they welcomed it. One of them has provided me a written response saying the same thing, but in writing. And I asked both of them to put it in writing, if they could.
And I spoke to both candidates also, they're both in agreement that for the safety of the community is the best thing to do, and hopefully they both turn in the letter just to show whatever court might hear it, that everybody's in agreement.
Requires a motion, second and a-
Motion made by Mayor Proton Davis, second by Councilman Bielpando. Any further discussion? None being, all those in favor, please raise your right hand, unanimous? All right, going on to resolutions, consideration and possible, and possible approval of a resolution, amending Resolution 2020-16R in order to extend, amend, and/or modify the order of the Second Mayoral Declaration of Disaster executed on March 22nd, 2020 by the mayor pursuant to Section 418.108 Texas Government Code regarding the COVID-19, a global pandemic.
Yes, sir. Mayor, you should all be looking at Exhibit, it's the, like, better word, No Stay at Home, it's 051.
051?
051, sorry. And what this, this is doing, if you recall, the mayor wants to take immediate action on Sunday to declare a second local disaster declaration and impose additional restrictions on the general public here. That action is only good for seven days, and that's why you find yourselves here. And this is your chance to extend, modify, or amend his, his actions from Sunday. And if we can go through it, just generally, we discussed it in executive session. We added Section 17, which talks about all persons who have undergone testing for coronavirus shall remain in quarantine as per the health provider's instructions. Yes?
Seventeen.
We're all there, okay? Then Section 18 is, recognizes the appointment of a local health authority, which you will ask to consider in the next agenda item, and it's already recognizing that individual. And also requires all public and private medical facilities to report by 5:00 PM, 5:00 PM on each day for the prior 24 hours, the number of COVID tests that were performed, the number of positive COVID tests, also to the local health authority. And also requires any residents who travel outside of Maverick County and outside of the United States for the purpose of COVID testing, they shall also report the test and the test results to the LHA, the Local Health Authority. Now, I know that you all have questions, how is this going to be, how are we going to send this out to the community? Hopefully, a lot of the community is listening to us and following us. But in addition to that, we have a requirement that we need to post the declaration that you end up passing in our kiosk. We need to also provide, in our company, for example, we're going to be working, the LHA's going to be working with public and private medical providers, we should probably distribute that there, that'll be our recommendation. We need to also have it on our website, readily available on the front, which we've done with the previous declarations and the mayoral declarations, so if anybody can access them also. And anyone can call, we have the EOC in place, also the Emergency Operations Center, they can call, and I'm sure that whoever answers can also facilitate a copy of, they need a copy of whatever declaration is passed. We are also making sure, one of the concerns that one of the council members expressed in executive session, making sure that we comply with the HIPAA regulations. Yes, the LHA, the local health authority, has to be an MD, a doctor, and we're recommending, since we already have Dr. Victoriano Valdez as our medical director for the city, that he serve in this capacity also. He's already been spoken to, and he has no concerns with doing that. And he has to comply with HIPAA regulations. So that's the way the public and private and public medical facilities can also feel comfortable that this is, one, this is a state requirement. Even before we implemented Dr. Victoriano Valdez as our local health authority, we had a local health authority at the state level, under state statute, and that's Dr. Lilian Rensdorf. But they are being so overwhelmed with work up there in San Antonio, that they're asking for us to get somebody locally in place. And that way, we have more direct contact and more immediate attention to these tests being performed, and also the positive tests, if any, continue to happen.
And the main thing is, on this local health authority, everybody that performs an exam on COVID-19 has to report it to him. And that way, we as a community are better informed of how many tests are going out there, not only from the hospital, UMC, Maverick County Hospital District, but from private practices. You know, and I think that's something that's going on throughout the country, that I've seen in other communities, I've spoken to mayors and judges, and a lot of communities, small communities like ours, don't have that local health authority. Therefore, they're relying on somebody that has to handle so many other counties and cities that we're not getting the information fast enough. So with this in place, it'll allow us as a community to be informed on a daily basis, and we're going to get notified of the positive results, and thank God, we've only been, you know, one positive test so far, the others that we've received have been negative. But at least we'll know exactly from now on how many tests are being sent out, and then get the results, whether they're positive or negative.
So that addresses 18, just some additional changes from Sunday, if I can continue, Mayor, council, is that okay?
Yes.
We've labeled the next section as Section 20, but it'll be reformatted to 19, because we skipped the number.
Can we go back to 18, that you specified there at the end? That even residents that travel outside, did you go through that part?
Yes, all residents who travel outside Maverick County and outside the United States. Do you see it, second to the last? For purposes of COVID-19 testing, you should also report the test and test results to the LHA, the local health authority.
So can you explain that for the public, just anybody, if they go to Mexico, they go to Louisiana?
Go to New Mexico, Louisiana, any other state, if they travel outside, San Antonio, for example. They have a duty, because we, the concerns that were being expressed is that, because we live on the border, and we are aware of certain individuals that have, has been informed to us-
Well, we know that they go back and forth with health. Our citizens go to Mexico, Mexico sometimes come over here, I mean, or people, American citizens live in Mexico, and they visit doctors. But what I want to see here, I want to make sure, it says for purposes, that, so, just as an example, you're saying for purposes, so they knowingly know they're going for COVID-19, they must report. What if they're going just for, they think they have a common cold, but the doctor over there decides, you know, we're going to test you anyway, so those, those individuals have to report it also. Is that, would that suffice, the way it's written there?
We could put in who are tested.
Yes, I wouldn't have that.
Who are tested, so for COVID-19.
There you go.
Okay, we'll make that change, Mayor. Yeah, so going for, anyone, and some people either don't have insurance, or they find it easier for them to, or to have a doctor in Mexico to go and visit them, or outside of Maverick County, they would have a duty when they come back to report to the LHA. Now, we're going to have, once you, you as a council formally takes action and appoints the LHA, we are going to have that information, his name, number, email, fax number, where anyone, if they visit our website, or make a call into the EOC, they could get that information.
To the LHA.
To comply with, with the reporting requirements.
We need to make sure the public has it.
Yes, and we've gone a step further with the, all, we've already drafted a letter that the city secretary's office would send, along with whatever you adopt today, the local disaster declaration, where we would inform all of the medical providers, both public and private, of the LHA, the local LHA, local health authority, Dr. Valdez, and provide also their contact, his contact information. So that every one of the medical providers here in the community has that information, easily available to them, to where they run a test, they can refer to it, and send it, and comply with our reporting requirements. That letter has been drafted already. Okay? Anything else for 18? We're good? Section, the next section is labeled 20, but it should be 19, we'll make that correction. And that applies to the concerns being expressed by some of the folks in the general public with respect to common carriers like the combis and the Greyhound buses, and then transporting people from out of town. So we're trying to restrict to a certain extent, and keeping in mind that we need to make certain exceptions, as noted there under subsection two. If people need to care for the elderly, minors, dependents, or persons with disabilities that are coming from out of town to take care of those individuals, we'll make that exception. And you see the other exceptions that are there, but we've discussed this in executive session. Let me know if you have any questions. But even then, we're also asking them to comply with all social distancing requirements that are imposed under state and federal law, so that we can try to curtail and limit the possible exposure of these people coming in from out of town, in the combis, the vans, the Greyhound buses. And again, the concern was, how do we make sure that these businesses are aware? Well, we'll work through EOC and the city secretary's office and make sure that they get a copy of this. The point is not to cite, that's been our, I think the council will agree, but it's to inform the businesses to make sure that there's compliance in this difficult time. Okay? The next section also details additional authority that the local health authority, Dr. Valdez, would have in inspecting or investigating common carriers and transportation vehicles coming into the community, and taking action if the need arises, okay? And the next section, it's labeled as 22, that'll have to change though. You, you already took action in suspending and postponing the special runoff election. We're adding it here also for purposes of clarity, and since we plan on attaching this document to the mandamus petition, okay? Then the next section, I gave you the wording for that. This is important because the changes that we're making or that we're asking you to consider is that this declaration requires, it's no longer strongly encourages or recommends, but it requires all persons and entities to comply with the social distancing protocols established by the CDC. In addition, this declaration strongly encourages and recommends compliance with all CDC guidelines regarding COVID-19 testing, and requires laboratories, workplaces, healthcare professionals, healthcare facilities, and all other industries and groups that are specifically identified by CDC to comply with, follow and implement the CDC's guidance for the respective industry or group regarding COVID-19. We have received, and this is coming, just so the general public is also aware, this is coming from the concerns that have been expressed to the EOC or to elected members, where you have waiting facilities that are in excess of the 10 people, or they're not complying with the safe distancing requirements. So we want to make it clear that these facilities that are exempt and are allowed to continue to operate need to comply- need to comply and establish protocols also in place. Uh, like the, if you have a blood center or a plasma center, even before they come in, they're supposed to have a protocol in place to, to check the temperature of every individual that is coming to ensure the safety and welfare of the, of the patients as well as the employees.
The other client, I mean, that, I was expecting all healthcare facilities and I thought plasmas were considered as such. So this will allow us the authority to go in.
Correct.
And just enforce it.
Across the board. Yeah, cuz these, all these healthcare, they're already exempt from the, any sort of restriction.
It's shut down, so.
Okay, so... And we, again, we, you've kept it, this is not new, but just to reiterate and hopefully anybody that's listening to us, um, this is punishable. If anyone violates this, we have that clause where this is punishable by fine up to a thousand dollars and confinement in jail for a term that does not exceed a hundred and eighty days. This is something that the mayor and the council have previously already adopted, but it's just emphasizing more that if you fail to follow these protocols in place by the council and the mayor, you could face a fine and you could face jail time. That's all there is with respect to... To that document, you wanna add anything?
No, just, I do wanna add, on Sunday's declaration, we added a few things and other things you pointed out. But on Sunday's declaration, we closed off all city parks. So no pub, no public parks or even private parks, whether they're in, um, in apartment complexes and so on. All those, all parks are closed within the city. And the Judge Southsutter went ahead and made sure all public parks across the county were closed, private and public. So there should be nobody out there in, in our park facilities in the city, uh, private or public. Uh, we've also limited the number of people that can go in to a store or a business establishment to one person, per family member. And, and that's just to keep that, help with that social distancing. We've also shut down the flea markets. So our, our outdoor markets are closed, uh, once again. And this is, um, until the state of emergency i- is no longer upon us. And we're going through difficult times, we know economically, all businesses are hurting. We know economically across the nation, that's being felt in the world really. And we're taking every step, and I, I keep looking at what other cities are doing, and the restrictions that we're imposing are as stringent or more stringent than even those that have declared themselves stay at home. We, we wanna encourage, we emphasize to the public, to stay at home if you don't need to be out. But the, the measures we're taking here and the measures I took on Sunday, I, I think they help us more than to say what other communities are doing and, and yet they're still letting all businesses run, business as usual, with the exception of what the governor's orders are and, and keeping people from eating in restaurants and gyms and, and massage parlors. I mean, there's, there's very few businesses that have been closed down. Uh, we are, we have seen some businesses voluntarily close down a- and, and we know their employees are, are gonna take a hit like everybody else. And we applaud them for doing that. Uh, but there's other businesses that, there's too many businesses that are essential that we cannot close those down. And so, uh, one thing that we're adding that I think is just crucial in getting the latest information is that local health authority. So I applaud, once again, Fire Chief Cardona for, for reaching out to, to the medical professionals and, and getting commitments from, to at least locally, that are willing to serve in that capacity and that we're taking the steps to require any doctor, any medical facility that runs a COVID-19 exam, that they must report it to the LHA, local health authority, by five o'clock each day for the last twenty-four hours. So I think this in itself is, is gonna help us keep a better track of who's being tested, how many are being tested. And we will, we will always find out who tests positive cuz DHSS, DSHS will contact us directly. But now they, local health authority will get that information as well and, and we can verify and be more accurate on it. I, I, I think the steps we're taking and enforcing that this social distancing is crucial. I applaud the businesses that are out there enforcing that already. We know that many of them are, unfortunately, there's still some that maybe haven't received the memo and, and it's up to the EOC that's working diligently every day, especially Lieutenant Amy Gonzalez getting our police officers to get, go and relay the message to everybody. So I, I think what we're putting in place is, is, is as stringent, once again, as, as any other communities. I think we've gone a step further, uh, without saying to stay at home. And that doesn't mean we don't want you to stay at home, we want you to stay at home if you don't need to be out. Uh, but we know the district is providing meals, so they're, they're out there working from nine-thirty to two o'clock. So we know we're gonna have that traffic flow. And that's basically only the time that minors should really have to be out there cuz they do gotta go with their parents or, or if they have to by themselves to pick up the food. Uh, other than that, you don't need to be out, don't be out.
Let me clear up because a concern was expressed also with respect to elderly daycares and daycares and child daycares. We need to inform the public that under the governor's orders, those types of businesses are exempt because they provide an essential, um...
Service.
Service to the, to the community. But the agencies that oversee those types of businesses, from what I've seen and what I've heard from owners, they are receiving continuously advice and recommendations from the state agency as to what protocols to put in place to try to protect the elderly, uh, at the elderly daycare centers and also the daycares. Those guidelines can also be found online, both at the TML website and in the, um, the state agency websites. And so we can, at the EOC, if people keep expressing concerns over it, we can provide that information to them so that they can distribute it, so that they can understand why daycares and elderly daycares. Now, any individual that owns or operates that business, if they feel that they can't follow those guidelines, they are more than, 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 nobody's holding them back from closing their operations that they wanted to. But currently, under the governor's orders, they are exempt because they provide an essential service.
And there are some people that need that service on a daily basis cuz they might not have anybody to tend to them for breakfast or lunch or maybe even medication in some cases. I've spoken to most of the operators and they are following more stringent guidelines that they receive, you know, disinfect, sanitize, they're checking, they're monitoring their pay, their clients when they get there, when they leave during, throughout the day. And they will notify doctors or the providers of those individuals if they have a concern over their health status. So, a- and from all of them, they have less people than they normally do and, and they're, they're practicing that social distancing within their facilities as well. A- and that's something, I don't know if we need to go monitor chief, but if you want, need to drive by for the, just to put some people at ease cuz we have had that question and we keep asking and it's essential to those citizens and that's why the governor or the state has, has not shut them down. And that includes daycare, that includes child daycare. You know, it's essential for some people to be able to work. And once again, in talking to some of those operators, same thing, disinfect, sanitize, they're not allowing kids in if they're sick. And they're sending them home if they have a concern about their, how healthy they are.
We, I forgot to address under section, um, the essential services section. We've been asked also to consider, the council considered guidance with respect to licensed real estate agents. And we are proposing something similar to what San Antonio has done in their local disaster declaration. And the wording would be licensed real estate agents may complete pending transactions such as attending closings, if possible. But the showing of properties for sale should not, shall not be allowed. That way we can, we can have some happy meeting. And that's what San Antonio is doing and that's the wording that we have come up with. But we did that when the documents were already prepared. And that's something that maybe the council can, can, can be asked to consider. I know that we addressed it briefly in the executive session.
It's not on there.
It's not on there right now. But, but that's just only, they needed some guidance. If you want to, you, you don't have to take it up or, or include it as part of your, your action.
I mean, most of them have pictures on their website, but I don't think it's the same as somebody going to visit.
That's what he was saying, pending transactions, because it's something like if they're already in the middle.
Yeah, it's paperwork.
Right.
Oh, and it doesn't stop them from going to their office and, and doing the, the administrative tasks necessary for it. But some people have expressed concerns in direction and guidance, even real estate agents. Can we go and show homes? Is that something allowable and we don't have any direction? San Antonio has addressed it and is the way they address it. If you have a pending transaction, you can move forward and proceed and do your closing, not a problem. But with respect to showing homes or properties, they're not allowing.
So you, they have a pending transaction with the client, you know what? I wanna go see the house one more time, they're not gonna be able to go see it? Or is it only for new customers?
Well, I mean, he's saying not to show it at all, right? I mean...
The way it's worded, it would not, you would not be able to show it. But we can make that for pending transactions that requires additional visits, that's exempt. But showing just new homes to, to individuals at this time?
Yeah, but, okay, so I've already started the paperwork, but you know what? I wanna go see it one more time.
We could make that more clear.
I'm not...
That you would be allowed if you, if that's a direction that you wanna go. The way it's current, the way I read it, it, it would, you would not be able to go show.
I mean, you're not talking about a whole lot of people getting together. I, I just don't wanna restrict somebody from do, i- if they're already in the process and they would like to go see the house, just the second look, third look, whatever look it is, and for us to say, no, you can't do that anymore, I mean... That's why I'm saying, if it's already in process, are they limited also?
I guess we could add language to make sure that that's okay.
Now, new clients? That's a different story.
Or you could, just from, again, this is, we're in a unique situation, things keep coming at us.
Yeah, there's just certain, the final closing document has to be signed physically so that they're gonna have to go to the...
Yeah, but they still have to, you know, to the social distancing.
Everything else can be done.
That's what you're referring to in your...
Everything else can be done electronically, online, you know? But I do understand that the final signature has to be...
Yeah, and for example, El Paso has closed all of their closing, all of their title companies. And so you can't do any closings there, so that's an easy answer.
With that, too. I, I just don't wanna restrict somebody to go see the house a second time if they've already...
We can include that language, Mayor, that's, that's the...
Well, I think the whole point is to keep people from going out there. So I would wanna restrict people from being out on the streets that much. If you can do this online, like Mayor said, you can look at the pictures of this home on the internet. Most of them have them there, so there's no need to go again physically.
Yeah, but like I was saying, it's not the same to see a picture versus being there and you get the final feeling for it, yes or no?
What I understand from...
This is, let me ask, let me ask another question, this, what we're extending would be another seven days?
That would be in...
This is where, how long are we going?
No, you would incorporate it into what you are right now contemplating. It's not a mayoral declaration, it's, and, and if you want to, you can just edit, no, no, we're keeping it out.
But you're talking about...
Because I don't want it to be like...
I, I, I see both sides of it, I'm, I'm, I'm listening to both of you. And it's like, yeah, I think it also depends on the, the length of how long we're doing this because it's like, you don't wanna, I understand what you're saying about how we don't want people on the street, but I understand what the mayor's saying about how you don't wanna also harm the, you know, some people from hurting their key, but it's tough, isn't it, you know? Sometimes you wanna see what you're, obviously you wanna see what you're buying, but, you know, hopefully. That's why, if we go back to what, uh, the city attorney said, he just said about how it's pending transactions. If we stay with pending transactions, it's...
And let me, let me let you know, um, the call that I got late last night was from an owner of a real estate company that was asking for the council to provide direction because they also have another business in Del Rio. And over there initially, after the, their passage, they were told they were gonna get, or the rumor was that they were gonna get cited and arrested. Yes? And so based on that, they're like, look, they're more concerned. If we have pending transactions, let's make sure that we can move forward and be able to close them. But we understand it for some reason, cuz even some of their own clients are telling them, I don't want you to bring anybody. That's what was...
That's expressing, yeah.
We're not going to show the house at this time.
Exactly.
So that's what was expressed to me from the owner of this real estate company. But that they just wanted some direction from the council.
I think the, the, I don't know, I would say the concern here for some of the agents, it's, um, the bank also gives you so many days.
A financing...
And if you don't finish the transaction within, within those days, then you have to start all over again. And I think that's what they're, you know, looking at. If this is almost finished, we were at the end of it, can we still go and, you know?
That's why we liked what you said about pending transactions because we're not starting a new transaction and not showing new homes from day one.
We're just trying to finish up.
Just try to finish up. I mean, if someone, yeah, someone's already almost done closing. I think we need to give them the opportunity to close again.
Thirty days are out, we'll start over again.
Yeah, can the financing window stop, close?
Yeah.
Well, that's what my language, the one that I read, allows for pending transactions to proceed. Now, this is still, if, we can't, we have no control over whether the two or three title companies here decide to close or they're off, whether they close them, I have a...
Considering that they will, you know, be open for business or even the bank at that point, you know? I mean, because...
If they're closing their lobby hours, services, so.
So.
We'll see what happens.
I guess just, I mean, it's his way to give them that, um, that option if it came to, that they really need it, you know? I mean, because the, the realtor, even the client can, can think and do whatever they want, but ultimately it's the bank that tells you, you know, yes or no, go ahead or no more. You know, and I think that's the, I, I think that's a serious concern. Because if the banks will say, you know what, we don't need to start from now, this is over and done with, we'll take it from what we left off, great. But if they're still following those thirty days, or forty-five days in most cases, I don't know, it's thirty or forty-five, however many days, you know? Then me, as an owner, if I'm this close to finishing my transaction and you're gonna make me do this all over again, I mean, we all know how tedious that is, you know, that paperwork and everything. So I think we leave it open to where, you know, if it's a, a transaction that's already started, you know, just give them the option of finishing it up, I mean...
Y'all wanna add there or not?
I think so, I mean, I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable with allowing them to do pending transactions.
I think the way Mr. White is saying, it's very, it's very simple, right?
Right, it's just, the thing about the showing and the not showing, I think it's like not showing a new, it's, showing a new property is not a pending transaction, basically, per se. You know what I mean? It's not like they already have an offer and all that stuff on the table, that's very different. They can show virtual, like Councilman Sully has said, you know, but...
And they're not gonna make a call until they go see them. But we don't know how long this is gonna extend.
Well, we can revisit that, I guess, I mean, I just don't wanna, hope people will come.
How about, how about this? Knowing the uncertainties and maybe you all need to go out and get feelers from the real estate agents and how they feel, since this was only expressed to me by one owner of a real estate company. And knowing that the mayor has the power to issue an immediate mayoral declaration, we don't address that right now, which is focus on everything else in the local disaster declaration. And you all can relay your information, um, to EOC, to me, or to the mayor as to how the other real estate agents, owners feel.
Yeah, I mean, I have spoken to at least two realtors and they have their staff basically working from home. You know, that, that I don't think is a concern, I mean... I, I don't know what the concern with two or three people going to see a house that's for sale. If they're going in different cars.
Well, I guess it's up to the...
To the owner?
The, I mean, it's like if, if I, let's just say if I were selling my house, if I wanna let them in or not, right? That's where you're talking about the limiting the social distancing, yeah, me. But if the bad thing about personal choices...
When you walk out, see, whatever, you know, at that point, it'll be end, however they...
Sure, people will do what they want anyways, yeah.
We don't address it, let's, let's just focus on everything else that's in there. And then after hearing input from the community, you know, you can relay that to the, to the mayor. And he has the powers of declaring an immediate, if he finds it necessary.
Necessary.
Okay? So we're back to just what was presented to you under the document, what the change is already expressed. There has been no motion or no second, so we'd ask that you consider approving...
Everything that you...
Item...
One, two, and three, two.
No, item one.
Just one.
This is item one? Or item one?
Already did three.
So is there a motion on, on the declaration amended? Cuz it is amended. So is there a motion on the declaration amended, 'cause it is amended from even Sunday's emergency declaration? Do we have motion?
This is for, okay, again, curious, just item number three, right? Three, two, one, we're doing one first, yes, okay, so moved.
The motion made by Councilwoman Ramon. Is there a second? Second by Councilwoman Del Fondo, any further discussion?
I guess Mr. Davis, did you vote?
I seconded, but he gets a brood, so it's okay.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I I I saw Davis, so who?
Motion made by Councilwoman Ramon, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Davis.
Don't worry, it's okay, it doesn't matter, I mean.
I'm never this far away from you.
So just so we can all be on the same page, since we were talking about different agenda items, we're on agenda item number one. We're being asked to consider extending, modifying, and amending Sunday's mayoral, second mayoral declaration of local disaster. And in that, it incorporated all of the additional restrictions that the mayor imposed on Sunday. And in addition, I went through already and covered the reporting requirements that citizens in public and private. Medical facilities would have with respect to reporting also any testing or positive tests. And then also talked about the common care, but I wanna go through it, delay the point, but.
So there's a motion and a second? Uh, no further discussion, all those.
I have a vote, I'm voting against, can we can we discuss a little bit? I'm voting against because I do think that we need to be a little more aggressive. And it's my opinion that we do, we should, as a community, order a stay-at-home policy. Uh, just for the safety of our people, I understand business, I have a law firm, we're all gonna be hurting. But as of right now, we do have a positive test. So, anything that we can do to restrict people from going out in the community, I'm all for that. If we have to close non-essential business, I'm all for that, so for that reason, I do vote against.
Uh-huh, but isn't isn't that, I mean, we're just extending?
This is open to approving the emergency declaration I made. And even going so far as to take other measures. So, we had said what we're, motion and second was just to pass it as we have it right here. Uh, my understanding, Councilman Salinas wants to take. Additional measure, it's not in favor right now, 'cause he wants to take additional measures and consider closing.
Non-essential business.
No, no, and I understand, but that's why I'm confused, and isn't that part of what's already? Non-essentials?
No, and and I'm gonna go to the discussion that.
What we have now is all businesses, they wanna voluntarily close, they they close.
Not necessarily, no.
Yeah, we're not closing any businesses, and and that's one thing, I I'll bring it up again. Uh, and I've said it in executive session, I'll bring it up again, 'cause it's up here. I'm looking at Laredo, I'm looking at San Antonio, I'm looking at Valverde, looking at Austin. Yes, they are shelter in place, stay at home. But their restrictions allow everything that we're allowing, and more so. They still have their open air fleet markets open, they have not closed any non-essential businesses. Everything that we have in place right now is harder than even those stay-at-home communities. When I think of a stay-at-home, the only way you're gonna stay at home if everything is closed. Like you said, it's not a non-essential. But you look at Laredo, they have not closed all non-essentials businesses. Valverde hasn't either, San Antonio hasn't either, they haven't restricted people from going out and exercise. So, they say they're stay-at-home communities right now, but they're still allowing people to move around and get out. You know, for non-essential things, a- and to me, it doesn't make sense to say stay-at-home. If we're not gonna force people to stay at home. I think it's a bigger burden on our first responders. Primarily P D, who will have to enforce these actions, to be having to tell everybody that's out there moving around. That they gotta stay at home. Furthermore, I think citizens who hear, oh, we're stay-at-home, and yet, people are allowed to go shopping. They're allowed to go to eat, pick up food at a restaurant, they're allowed to go, there's still some businesses open at the mall. They're allowed to exercise on the streets, that's not really stay-at-home. And that's what I'm seeing in Laredo, we just saw the govern- and you mentioned it, Eddie, and I saw, I heard it too. The the governor himself, Austin declared itself stay-at-home, and yet, he went from his office to another. To the DPS building, and he was amazed at how many people were out and about. So, if we're gonna say stay-at-home, then we gotta shut down.
Non-essential business.
Yeah. So, are we gonna shut down all the stores or businesses that?
I I think like for us, Mayor, shutting down will be, and that's what we need to, again, be very careful about that. Because you're talking, uh, you placed DPS, P D, Sheriff's Department at the entrance of the W O Highway fifty-seven. Laredo, the bridges, you know, that's shutting down. In essence, you know, we don't want anybody in and we don't want anybody out. That's what shutting down will be, yes or no, we have what, seven?
This talks about just shutting down non-essential business, putting even more restrictions than what the present order has right now. I know that we talk about other cities, we talk about Laredo, we're not Laredo, we're Eagle Pass, we need to take care of of our people. Uh, we can't be comparing ourselves to every city in Texas, because we don't control what they do, we control what Eagle Pass does. So, uh, I mean, we have our opinion, so, i- if if we can do it now, before we get. Ten more positive tests, I'll do it, man, if we can save a life, like just preventing a non-essential business from being open. I'm all for that, so that's basically just my opinion.
No, and and I think we have a moral responsibility ourselves as individuals. You know, you wanna fight for rights, you wanna, you have this right, that right, it's your right, it's people's right also to take care of each other, and. Like I said, we are taking measures that are more stringent than Laredo, without saying stay in place, or stay at home. And other communities for that matter, so when I've seen these communities pop up with these resolutions, and they're still allowing people to exercise outdoor. They're not really staying. They're just titling it, and and maybe it is a psychological thing, oh, I feel better, 'cause we're stay at place, but everybody's out and about.
We have a a very good force, a very good police force, a very good EMS, we have qualified people. That would enforce a stay-at-home order, if some other cities aren't doing it, then that's on them. But we have qualified people ready, willing, I'm sure, to enforce a stay-at-home order. So, if somebody else is not letting people do whatever, what can we do, I mean, we're not council people for. For the city of Laredo, we're council men and women for the city of Eagle Pass.
We do have a motion and a second.
I understand what you're, what's being said, and I'll just sort of reiterate it a little bit, um, even though, I mean, we're. Our, what we're being presented is not necessarily stay-at-home, we are requesting a voluntary stay-at-home. Because when we look at what's being enforced under the stay-at-home, what's uh, being der- uh. Termined as essential, it gives a lot of caveats for a lot of exceptions, and that's, I think, what the mayor is alluding to about how. This is gonna still be a lot of people, I understand what you're saying, and I agree with it, I think everyone here agrees with you that we wanna do what's uh, best for the safety of. Of all people equally, and I don't, it goes without saying that we have a very qualified police force, uh. EMS, all of our first responders, the same thing goes, we wanna make sure that we're not endangering the lives of the medical community in any way, shape, or form. Look at the people that are providing service for us at our grocery stores and stuff, I mean, you know, all these people are crucial. I mean, the thing is, all of these, they're all essential, so it's like, it's not gonna be very different than what's already being done, the only thing is that we're really just pleading with. The common public, if you can, if you do not have to go to something, you know, the state form really is not gonna make a difference if we. Terminal the stay-at-home or not, to be quite honest with you, so, but that's, goes without saying that. I I just don't want, uh, I just don't want the citizens listening in to think that we're not, that we're not concerned about that, 'cause that's really truly, um. Very far from the case, from being true, it's not the fact that, um, we're not taking that into consideration by making this mandatory stay-at-home, 'cause there's only so far that we can enforce. So, with that, with all the exceptions in place, under uh, stay-at-home clause, it's still. What we're having placed now is a little actually stricter, like you're saying, because the the parks are being closed, 'cause under the stay-at-home policy, that doesn't, it doesn't apply. I mean, that's why we're, we've closed all of our city parks, all our city gyms and stuff like that, city-owned and non-city-owned gymnasiums and all that stuff that also came through from the governor's. Uh, declaration, but you know what, I I think we're doing what needs to be done, but I think we as citizens and private individuals also have to do our part. And all stay-at-home at a at all possible.
If you don't need to be out. A- and and you know, one thing, measures that the, our fire, EMS, and P D are taking, our first responders. They, we're trying to limit the interaction they have with the community, okay? Citizens are not allowed in the P D office, they're they're doing everything by phone, now if it's a major emergency, they're gonna respond to it. But we're trying to limit the exposure of our first responders to every little call. Fire EMS, they will, they have come up with new guidelines that have been throughout the region, this is regional-based, right? Where they're gonna try to maintain their distance unless it's a real emergency. And they're not gonna be transporting everybody that wants to be transported, they're gonna have to meet a certain threshold. Before that individual be, EMS person will say, yes, we're transporting it. And that again is an effort to limit the interaction between our EMS, our first responders, and citizens. And overwhelming the hospital, I mean, we've been very fortunate, we have one case, we don't want any more cases, okay? The only way you're gonna stop people from moving out is a total lockdown, okay, and I don't see anybody doing that. And and that, that's really the only way that you're gonna. Stop faster, I think people taking are taking more precautions now. Uh, yeah, it's real hard not to be scratching yourself, I think I've done it a couple of times, I don't know, my nose is itching today. But, you know, it's tough, but those are things that we're used to doing and we take for granted, and now that we have to not do it, it's hard. And and I'm just gonna ask the citizens that, if you don't have to be out, don't be out, okay? I think that's the best thing without us going into a lockdown, 'cause when you talk about our responders being able to do the job, yes, they can do it. But I don't wanna put every cop out there having to deal with every citizen that's out there, and once again, getting more contact with them. And then when you're talking about closing non-essential business, it was a lengthy discussion, what is non-essential? There's so many things that are considered essential, that not, they're not shutting, that's why, that's why these other communities are not shutting down businesses.
If if I mean from a legal standpoint, I informed the council that you had discretion in also determining what was essential and not essential. And taking some of that stuff out, now, nobody's doing it here in Texas yet, but we can learn from other countries also. Like Italy, Hong Kong, Tokyo, they've won gone on a complete shutdown, for obvious reasons.
They went on a lockdown.
For obvious reasons, 'cause they had a full-blown epidemic now on their, on their hands. But the finding the happy medium of what can we do while still trying to keep some sort of an economy in place? At the same time trying to save lives, and make sure that this doesn't get out of hand. I'm sad to say.
And and that's a responsibility of each of us.
Yes, and and you guys, it's elected to to make these very tough decisions.
So, I I I think what we have in place is, and I'm gonna say it again, it's more stringent than even these communities that have stay-at-home, they haven't closed their parks, we did. You know, and the the, everything else that they put in place is from the governor's order, nobody can eat at restaurants. Uh, they still got their non-essential businesses running, and that's why I say, I think our guidelines are more stringent with. And and we don't.
And I respect that, I just disagree, I think we can do better, I think we can do more, and we're here to speak our opinions, vote on on the issue, and. I think Eagle Pass can be better, I think, just because somebody's not doing it doesn't mean we can't do it, we don't want more positive cases, and. We can control that by enforcing closures of some businesses. That of course we don't wanna do, we don't want people losing money, but we don't want people losing lives and getting sick, so.
Uh, well, there's a motion and a second, uh, put it out to vote, unless anybody has any further discussion. Uh, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Three, four, all those against? Three, four, Mayor Pro Tem Davis, Councilwoman Ramon and myself, against, Del Fondo and Salinas. All right, going on to item number two.
By Mayor?
Yes.
Th- this is.
The local health authority.
The appointment of the local health authority, yeah, as a way back around and and to, just real quickly, to inform the public. Their Maverick County, the city of Eagle Pass, that Maverick County, have a local health authority currently in place. Designated under the state statute, that's Dr. Lilian Rindstor, who works out of San Antonio. And the E O C and Lavo visiting with her, uh, they were, they mentioned how over overwhelmed they were with the the number of cases that they're getting up there. Because she's also the L H A for a number, uh, ten, twelve, or more other, um, uh, counties. And so, her recommendation, and also on the request of the mayor and the E O C's concerns, that we're, we'd like to get these. Reporting of positive tests much, much faster, she recommended that we appoint a lo- a real local, uh, local health authority. And we are recommending that the council consider Dr. Victoriano Valdez, who serves as our medical director for the fire department. Already and for the EMS, so that they can, he can work in conjunction with the E O C. And make sure that there's these reporting requirements, and they would also give him the authority to issue what are called charging orders. To those people that get tested, to so that they can self-isolate and quarantine themselves, or the ones that test positive, to make sure that they're quarantined. And if they violate those charging orders, then they can face civil and criminal penalties. And so, having that, a local, local health authority would greatly enhance what the mayor, E O C. And all of the 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 city is having to deal with under the emergency management plan. And in addition to that, if for some reason Dr. Victoriano Valdez is unable to perform his duties as L H A. The resolution that you have before you, and in visiting with Dr. Dr. Valdez, he is recommending Dr. Hector Trevino. To serve as his alternative, for some reason, he's unable to perform his duties. And then the third individual that you have under the resolution, it would fall back, if none of the, none of the first two doctors are unable to perform their duties. Then it would fall back again to Dr. Lilian Rindstor, uh, who currently is our L H A. There's no contract that we have to terminate with Dr. Lilian Rindstor, this is not costing the city of Eagle Pass. Any additional money, because she is already appointed under state statute, and she has also been kind enough to let us know. That she would be able to work with Dr. Valdez and assist in whatever questions he may have as the new L H A. For the city of Eagle Pass and for Maverick County, and facilitate, and, you know, whatever's necessary, her and her office, her staff. You know, help with some of the questions that he may have, samples of our char- of the charging orders that these folks that get tested. Or that test positive, you know, that sort of stuff. And so that's what you have before you, and in front of you to consider, there needs to be a motion, a second, and a vote on.
Motion made by Councilwoman Seconda, second by Councilman Salinas, any further discussion? None, no further discussion, all those in favor, please raise your right hand unanimously. Last item, German? Motion made by Councilman Salinas, second by Councilwoman Ramon, any discussion? Motion made by Councilman Salinas, second by Councilwoman Ramon, any discussion, y'all wanna stick around? This is supposed to be a short meeting. This is the longest short meeting we've had, anyways, uh, no discussion, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. United?